Order at seven oh four P M. Mister clerk for a call.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for the record, Mayor, councilmember Vendosa will not be joining us this evening. Councilmember Wes Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Pretam Perano.
Here.
And Mayor Burnworth.
Here.
Thank you, Mayor.
When everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Adjustments to tonight's agenda.
Madam Mayor and council, we would ask that item D five of the table for the next meeting will come back with some additional information.
Mr. Turner, do we have any actions reporting out of closed session?
Yes, thank you. The council met in closed session and discussed public employee performance evaluation of the city manager. Direction was given, no final reportable action. The council also discussed real property negotiations related to the property listed, the old post office. Direction was given to the negotiator regarding terms and price. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving on to public comment. If you wish to address the city council concerning any item within the city's council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit of three minutes on each person's presentation. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the city clerk's office in writing forty-eight hours before the meeting. Do we have any public comments here for tonight? Yes, please step up to the podium.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name's Michelle Hollinger with Victoria Homes, one seven nine Sylvia Court in Imperial. And it is my great pleasure to announce our grand opening of Victoria Park Three, October twelfth, from five thirty to eight. And I would like to invite Imperial City Council, Imperial staff, P D, and the Planning Commission to join us in celebrating this wonderful event because it's been five years since we've been able to have a grand event. So I have a flyer here that I would like to hand off, and I hope to see you all there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments here tonight?
No other comments, Mayor, than I'm aware of. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to A, special presentations. Item A one, proclamation for National Four H Week. And so the proclamation is whereas this year's National Four H Week theme, I love Four H reminds us that every child has valuable strengths in real influence to improve the world around us, and Four H brings opportunity and experience to young people from all backgrounds. So this year, we celebrate access and equity for all. We commend Four H participants and alumni across the country, as well as the Four H educators who deliver life-changing programs to millions of young people each year. And whereas Four H programs are delivered by the cooperative extension, a community of more than a hundred public anniversaries across the nation that provides experiences for young people to learn by doing. Four H welcomes young people of all beliefs and backgrounds, giving kids a voice to express who they are and how they make their lives and communities better. And whereas supporting future leaders in science, agriculture, and community leadership is an important imperative of the U S Department of Agriculture, National Institute of Food and Agriculture Four H Program. And whereas expanding from its strong agricultural roots, Four H helps young people explore the world around them and grow into productive adults by promoting healthy youth development in order to give young people the capacity to act as responsible members of society and agents of change. And by understanding the complex experiences young people face in promoting high-quality youth leadership development. Four H helps young people meet the challenges of adolescence and successfully transition into adulthood. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Imperial, California does resolve, determine, and order as follows. I, Mayor Catherine Burnworth, on behalf of the Imperial City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of October first through seventh, two thousand twenty-three as National Four H Week, and call upon all Americans to learn more about and celebrate promoting Four H opportunities for all young people. We also express appreciation and gratitude to the nation's Four H alumni and educators for their important contributions and tireless service to our nation's youth. And I think our kids from Southwest Valley, Four H. Thank you, Logan. I think you just gotta talk into it, bud.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and esteemed city council members. My name is Logan Mistrell, and I am the historian and reporter for the Southwest Valley Four H Club. I would like to thank you for inviting us to speak for the National Four H Week proclamation. Four H provides many opportunities for the youth, starting at age five, to learn responsibility, to give back to the community, and to learn important leadership skills that will help them now and for the rest of their life. It is also a great way to meet new people and make new friends. Most people think Four H is as the animal group. However, there is so much more to Four H. Four H is based on the foundation of the four Hs, head, heart, hands, and health. Head is for clear thinking. One of the main focuses of Four H is education. The second H is heart, to greater loyalty. This focuses on caring for others. The third H is hands, to greater service. This teaches the importance of giving back to your community. The final H is health, to better living. This signifies the need to care for oneself to continue to care for others. Four H has many events and activities that allow Four H members to live by the Four H motto, make the best better. Some of these events are the Four H barbecue, Four H camp, presentation day, judging day, the clover sale, and of course, the California Midwinter Fair and Fiesta. Four H members also live by the Four H slogan, learn by doing. Some examples of this are leadership conferences, cooking projects, rocketry projects, and all of the animal projects. Four H is a great thing for the youth, and I would like to thank you again on the behalf of Southwest Valley Four H Club and all of the other Four H clubs for acknowledging National Four H Week. We have a short video for you to watch of Four H members in action. I hope you enjoy.
Thank you.
I think that's amazing. You guys did a really good job, and I look forward to seeing all the animals and all the projects every year. I saw my little cousins and my big cousin Nina in there, so it's great. I love seeing all the projects. So good job, guys and girls.
Yeah, so, so I was also in Southwest Valley Four H when I was a kid, and it's crazy that the leadership skills and just any life skill that you learn in Four H applies to, you know, in your adult life. I know the first time I got asked to run a council meeting, they were like, do you need a script? What do you need? And I was like, no, it's in Four H. I know how to read an agenda. So, you know, it's just life skills that you always use. So, but right now, I'm gonna ask all of my Four H kids to come up, and we're gonna take a picture real quick.
Mr. Logan, you're doing a good job. Good job.
This is awkward time where all you parents with kids can leave. Don't bother. No. We're all parents, and we understand.
Should just help.
Moving. Can we continue item A two to another meeting during the vote on?
Are you, item A two? Yeah, I think you have the discretion to just put it over to another meeting.
Okay. Move A two to a later meeting where Mister Hammondus can show up. Item A three, proclamation declaring month of October a cybersecurity awareness month. Whereas the city of Imperial has a vital role in identifying, protecting, and responding to cyber threats, they may have that may have a significant impact on our residents and collectively security and privacy. And whereas individuals, businesses, nonprofits, government organizations, academic institutions, and the local economy have been increasingly reliant on information systems and technology to conduct business, engage in commerce, access information, communicate, and provide essential services. And whereas cybersecurity, education, and awareness are crucial for any individual or organization, and that cybersecurity is essential to digital inclusion. And whereas a whole community effort is necessary to ensure that all residents of Imperial have the skills and opportunity to benefit from digital inclusion. And whereas Cybersecurity Awareness Month was launched by the National Cybersecurity Alliance and U S Department of Homeland Security in October two thousand four, and now recognized by thousands of organizations, including the federal government, the multi-state information sharing and analyst's center, and the National Association of State Chief Information Officers. And whereas maintaining the security of cyberspace is a shared responsibility in which each of us has a critical role to play by being aware of computer security essentials that will improve the security of the city of Imperial's information infrastructure and the economy. And now, therefore, the city council of the city of Imperial, California, does dissolve or does resolve, determine, and order as follows. I, Mayor Catherine Burnworth, on behalf of the Imperial City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October two thousand twenty-three a cybersecurity awareness month, and encourage all citizens to be vigilant at home and in business about potential risks associated with cyber threats. I think this goes to our I T guys, right? You're not as cute as the little kids either.
Oh, I think you guys enjoy stuff, the videos that we send every two months. And finally, I wanna say thank you to all the employees of the city because they are the key of us to being safe. Thank you very much.
On to the consent agenda, or consent agenda. All, all items appearing under consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council with one motion without discussion. Should any council member or other person request that any item be considered separately, the item will be taken up at the time as determined by the mayor. Do we have a motion or any adjustments to the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, there's some warrants that need to be. The pull item warrant number one, one, three, two, zero, seven, for Miss Obaso Martinez. And then then item warrant number one, one, four, and then one, one, three, four, four, six, for myself.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second? For which ones?
How you want.
Yes.
Okay.
Item one, one. Two, zero, seven, I'm sorry.
That's the motion.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, second.
I have a motion by Tucker and a second by Al Perano. Please vote.
Motion carries four zero, Mayor. That's on item one, one, three, two, zero, seven.
Thank you.
Make a motion on one, one, three, four, four, six.
Oh, second.
Of a motion by Obaso Martinez and a second by Tucker. Please vote.
Mayor, I will do a roll call vote on those items because they're separate from the calendar, so I will do a roll call. Obaso Martinez.
That's a yes.
Thank you. Mister Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor Pretam Perano. Mayor Burnworth, the motion carried.
Sorry, abstain on that one.
So there's three with one abstention. Mayor, thank you. That's item one, one, three, four, four, six.
A motion for the rest of the consent agenda.
That motion.
Of a motion by Tucker and a second by Obaso Martinez. Please vote.
Mister Obaso Martinez.
Yes.
Mister Tucker.
Yes.
Councilmember, Mayor Pretam Perano.
Yes.
Mayor Burnworth.
Yes.
The rest of the consent calendar carries by four zero. Thank you, Mayor.
Item C, public hearing items, discussion, action. Item C one, conduct public hearing and approve reimbursement agreement with Heritage at Dahlia Ranch LLC and City of Imperial for sewer lift station located on Morning Star subdivision. And I'll open this at seven twenty-five P M. And staff report for Mister Mora.
Good evening, council. Some of you already know Heritage at Dahlia Ranch LLC constructed a sewer lift station within the morning site, Morning Star subdivision. The developer, the developer has been requesting cost participation with the surrounding projects, but have been very unsuccessful. The developer is now requesting a reimbursement agreement to be established for expenses incurred for the expansion of the lift station. The attached reimbursement agreement will provide a method for which they will be reimbursed by any property owner outside the boundaries of the development that connects to the lift station. The agreement will terminate after thirty years, and the city will keep three percent of the fees collected for administrative cost. Staff recommends approval of the agreement, and I'll step for any questions that you may have.
How many questions from the?
To be clear on this, the only area that's gonna be subject to this is phase two. And and the hotel?
Actually, on the if phase one.
Only phase one, not phase two is not gonna pay.
No, it's not included in there.
Okay, so all of phase one, hotel, and all that stuff that's going in there.
That is, that is correct.
Do we have any public comments?
No public comments on this item, Mayor.
So I'll close this public hearing at seven twenty-seven P M. Do we have any more discussion or a motion from the council?
Second.
Of a motion by Obaso Martinez and a second by Al Perano. Please vote.
A motion, Mayor, carries again four zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to items D, action items. Approval of the operational agreement between Women Haven and Imperial Police Department to provide assistance to crime victims residing in the city of Imperial with Captain Sheffield.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This agreement is between Women Haven and Imperial Police Department, and it's for the intent to work in collaboration with Women Haven and the police department to provide essential resources for, for specific crime victims in the city of Imperial. In turn, they will provide training as needed to, to our officers and us, and provide pamphlets, handouts, so we can get to crime victims.
How many comments or a motion from the council? I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Of a motion by Tucker and a second by Al Perano. Please vote.
A motion carries four zero, Mayor. Thank you.
Moving on to item D two, Highway eighty-six monument signage with Mister Moreno, Mister Mora.
Madam Mayor and, and council, as we all know, this item has been a long time coming. It's, it's something that I know the council has been interested in, in doing. The purpose to have this on the agenda tonight is to kick off, if you will, a process by which we will have monuments at both the north entrance to the city as well as a southern entrance to the city. What you have as part of your agenda package is intended as a starting point, just to basically stimulate some discussion with the, with the goal that once, once staff has an idea of what the council is looking for, as, as indicated in the staff report, our, our talented staff may uh as as indicated in the staff report, uh uh our our talented staff may be able to uh produce something that would capture uh the council's uh intent. And so if if uh if we get that sort of direction this evening, recognizing that it doesn't have to happen this evening if you wanna uh consider further down the road, but the thought would be that we uh get your direction. Uh and then um uh reduce it to something that you can look at. Uh and then we can uh determine um budget issues, whether or not it is indeed something that we can produce uh with our uh with our uh staff uh or in which we might need some assistance from from outside uh vendors. But anyway, anyway, you have what before you, I know that there's, as you drive around, you see every city has its own idea. Uh uh about how uh the image, the uh vision that you wanna portray, culture, if you will. But anyway, uh we're we're open to hear what you have to say and hopefully we can uh uh turn this discussion into something uh that's tangible that uh we'll see sooner rather than later.
Any comments from the council?
Surprise. Um, I mean, first of all, thank you, cuz it's been a long time coming. Um, almost seven years to be clear, but uh eh, good things come to those who wait. So I'm looking at number six, the last drawing that we have, where it's hollow on the bottom, there's nothing there. The only thing that I wanna make sure we under- we look is and we gotta have some consistency in our branding. We see our sign here on the corner with our round emblem. But everything we have around the city, we spent, for all those years, we spent all that money on the mosaic. Everything went mosaic on our trashcans, on our parks, everything is the mosaic. That one, there you go, thank you. This one right here. Um, but we keep using the round emblem, so. Going back, yes, we we know that the round emblem was the original that started, but then the branding went. Everything was changed and now we're going back and reverting to that. So what I'd definitely like to see is that uh we can take our and back to that original discussion, have the the metal cut out the the, what did it called, the uh plasma cut mosaic sign that was in the office, something like that. Um, painted, pow- powder coated something. Be that the center of focus with the pillars, the arch. Um, I know uh we can put the city of Imperial. Katie didn't like the welcome, but we're talking about just city of Imperial. It's a great start. Um, around it, we'd like to see the more of a our desert landscape so that there is no vandalism to it. So I think that's a great start for us to have and allow us to to build something. I was asked, does it have to be that big? My answer is absolutely. I want people to know that they're coming into Imperial. We're, might be the little town, but we're, we got big heart, so. That's kinda my two cents of what I'd like to see. Um, something in that kinda sense. Um, I don't know what the rest of the council would think, but that's kinda what I'm, I've been leaning towards.
My question kind of to reiterate, eh, do we have like an official branding? Cuz looking at Tony's hat and then Mister Robert's shirt and you know, our other items. Please, Anthony, that, anybody.
Absolutely, miss. Can use your mic, Jackie.
You guys are friends.
As far as what I can kind of recall, the the seal that you see in the upper corners with the blue and stuff, that was done back when Vince Long was here. And that's a seal that the council actually authorizes, the official seal, when they done away with the one that had the airport and the ID and the fairgrounds on it. The mosaic was done as an advertising deal to put us out in advertising when Marlene Best was here. And it was never that I knew of officially adopted by council, but we started using it to the point. And it was for marketing purposes to, when we were getting in front of shopping malls and things, when they go to conference, it set the design separated from a standard city seal that a lot of cities used. So that's the reason there's two different ones at this point in time, and I believe that's kinda where it's at. One we use for marketing and one is actually quote unquote the official seal, so to speak.
I, me personally, I would like to see. How you guys?
I like the the mosaic for like the marketing purposes, but then like when it comes to like documents and anything that's a little bit more like uh professional looking, I like the seal better, but.
It's like that consistency, I guess, you know?
And it's not against, and and you could design this a seals, a new seal if you so chose.
Oh, then it gets too too much.
Like I said, the other seal had been in existence for about twenty years and there was one prior to that even.
No, the seal is great.
Yeah, I like.
The mosaic's great too, but I think that consistency across the board when we're looking at, this is the sign that's coming into the city, right? This is something that needs to be uniform and something that you recognize as coming into Imperial, I guess. That's my thought process behind it.
So do we have direction to allow staff to get creative with our ideas and use a mosaic and provide some cost estimates? And then if we can make sure that it's got whatever stuff Tony puts on the parks, the the paint washes off when the kids tag it up.
And I know the drawing has a security guard on there, we're gonna have that there full time.
It's gonna be a statue of Dennis.
Dennis is out, I've seen all the signs. I've seen all the emblems.
No, I was saying desertscape cuz you want people not to be able to traipse through there, right? But uh, but what about can be as something?
I just wanna make sure when it fits into our Highway eighty-six blueprint and it matches that theme and we're kind of just so it's all cohesive.
So if I heard right, Jackie, this would be our marketing, our our mosaic for this.
Something. There is another thing, if you look on um uh city monument signs dot com, they have a big website. Uh, the company's out of Marietta, uh art signs dot com, excuse me, not city signs, art art signs dot com. They do a large number of city monument signs evidently up and down the state and in several other states. It give you some really cool ideas, um.
A lot of cities.
They do look. But if you want the small city with the big heart, we'll make the sign look like a heart. Just for you.
Uh, thank you. But I think this is a great start.
I'm excited.
So, I think we got direction. Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Move on to item D three, approval of Sun Valley Behavioral Medical Center to host their annual five K race, one mile race in the city of Imperial, Imperial borrow city barricades and cones with Tony Lopez.
Uh, good evening, mayor and council. Um, as you guys may or may not already know, uh Sun Valley has done this event uh within our city or hosted this event uh on Marshall Avenue for a number of years now. So what they're requesting is to once again uh utilize that portion of Marshall Avenue. Uh, and uh if you look at the map attached to your uh agenda item, it shows that they're primarily running on the fairgrounds. Uh, they're not, we're not closing streets, we're not doing anything like that, so uh what they're requesting is the use of our uh traffic control, uh cones and barricades to set out as part of the race. And uh kind of uh keep the safety of the race in intact for throughout throughout their process. And then uh we would drop them off tomorrow or Jackie's crew would, and then we pick them up on uh Monday or Tuesday. So uh they're requesting the use of our resources, so that's why we're bringing this item to you guys now.
Have uh any questions, comments or a motion?
To do approve.
Second. I have a motion by Alperano and a second by Tucker, please vote.
That motion carries four zero as well, mayor, thank you.
Item D four, declare surplus library shelving units to make space for library redesign with Denise Ulet.
Good evening. For to make room for the new computer area, the dated metal shelving needs to be removed from the wall so that the computers can be relocated and use those outlets along the wall in that area. Uh, similar older shelving near the current desk will also be removed and replaced um with newer shelving that we're repurposing that better fits under those same windows. Uh, and then there are s- four small HAN units and some older wooden shelving in the processing room that no longer fits our space and purposes, and we would request that we can surplus these items.
Have any questions, comments or a motion?
Second.
I have a motion by Obeso Martinez and a second by Tucker, please vote.
Motion carries again four zero, mayor, thank you.
Item E, reports, E one, department reports, do you know my departments have any reports tonight? HR.
Good evening. So since our last uh council meeting, we have had four additional new hires. Wanted to introduce you to those new faces. Um, so we have a quick slideshow. Um, for the first staff, we have Alejandro Rodriguez, general maintenance worker two, you'll find him in public services. Then we have Officer Dario Salazar, police officer with our police department. And we have Ricardo Trujillo, uh general maintenance worker one, is uh public services. And Anthony Zapata, general maintenance worker one with public services. So if you see them, um, give them a big welcome.
I really hope seeing the new hire spaces, yes. Do you have any other department reports? Mister Lopez.
Mayor and council, uh, just a reminder, uh we have a few events coming down uh right around the corner. One of them, uh the first one being our first uh downtown event, which is on October twenty-first from five to nine PM. We're gonna have a lot of cool things, uh wrestling, some new entertainment uh lineup for for the event as well. Among uh some of the uh normal stuff, our our merchandise vendors. Come support your local business at at our downtown event on the twenty-first and then the following Friday, we will have our first annual trunk or treat at Eager Park from six to ten. So come uh bring your kids and come join us at the park a- at uh at uh on the twenty-seventh from six to ten.
Have any other department reports? Onto city manager report, Mister Merida.
Just very quickly, madam mayor, you know, you the, it's cybersecurity awareness. And we, you can only, you only have to look at the news to see what sort of mischief is out there. And uh I I uh I uh would just like to say I appreciate our IT. Uh, because while, while I would suspect there, nothing is perfect. If you look at the sort of entities that get hacked, you would think that if anybody would be on top of it. The MGM Grand would be on top of it, but uh but it just goes, it just goes to show you. Uh, and I, and I, I, I believe our IT uh uh takes a backseat uh to no one when it comes to protecting us.
Thank you very much.
Starting to my left, uh councilmember Obeso Martinez, do you have anything to report?
I attended um California Cal Cities with Robert O'Ton and um our illustrious city manager. It was very um enlightening. You go to you, your sessions, you're learning a lot, you're networking with all the different municipalities and then got to attend also, see what's out there, right? Got to see some signs which bolstered us to want to put these signs out there. I got to ride on a merry-go-round, which makes me wanna merry-go-round for our parks. No, you got to see a lot of things out there. I do, I wanna merry-go-round, but that's besides the point. They put a governing kind of speed thing on them now. It's not like the death traps of the eighties when I grew up. But um, no, it was really um, really neat thing to see, really um really enlightening, really educational, so I appreciate being able to meet with the fellow cities and get to learn from everybody and then, you know, hang out with our fellow city council members as well. And then learn from our planning and also from Mister Dennis. And then in addition to that, I attended the Imperial Valley Regional Chamber Dinner. And congratulations to our very own Brickhouse Deli. They were nominated as Small Business of the Year. So we're super proud of them, right? They're, if you've gone to Brickhouse, I'm sure everybody here has. They do a phenomenal job with breakfast and lunch and they're a gem to have in our city. And so we're happy that they got voted as uh best small business. And then couple little things that are coming up, Wolf Halloween, if you have a dog or dogs, you can dress up your dog. Next Friday, they are having a, a dog. I guess a costume contest. You can go take your dog and those uh benefit the humane society. So they have vendors and food and a dog costume contest as well, so. Couple of things that are happening, that's at Fitness Oasis here in Imperial at seven o'clock.
Councilmember Tucker, do you have anything to report?
No, the only question is for Dennis and for the the pathway to get onto eighty-six at the new car wash. How, why has that been on a stand still the last couple weeks?
There's been a couple of issues. We, we, we had some issues with the water line. There was a leak and there was some delays. Um, the, the, uh, which has received the asphalt uh mixed sign we just approved. Um, so it's moving forward. We'll, we'll, I think we are like at least two to three weeks out. So hopefully, hopefully we get that done, Rosa.
Alright, because asking us and we didn't really have an answer, I didn't have an answer, so I figured I would go to the source. It wasn't us, the whole.
We all got black eyes from getting beat up about it so much from all the junior high parents.
Thank you.
Mayor Pretam Alperano, do you have anything to report?
Yeah, just a couple of things, I uh, just like uh councilmember Obeso Martinez, I also attended Cal Cities. Um, it's always neat to see what other cities are doing, what other, you know, we attend these, these breakout sessions and we, you know, we look at our city and we're like, man, that's rough. And you look at everybody else like, we got it nice. Uh, because some of them are just, they, you know, we look at our problems and theirs are a little tougher, but they, we try to figure out how to get, get out of those. And then just like everything else, we go to these conferences and we see things that we like and try to bring back to our city. Um, you know, I don't want some merry-go-round and I want the, and and I want the drinking fountain. I want the drinking fountains. I mean, uh, it was nice to see uh these little things that we can try to make our community better. Um, but uh, it's just little things like that. I didn't get a chance to attend the uh, the regional dinner. But uh, thanks for sending the picture, I really appreciate that. Um, glad you guys were thinking about me. Um, but other than that, I think uh, I don't have very much, look forward to our, you know, great weather coming, coming up and staff, thank you guys for all the hard work, appreciate it.
You know, and for me, I also attended the Regional Chamber of Commerce Dinner. I'll just echo everybody's comments about that. Um, today, uh Dennis Merida and myself met with our state senator Steve Padilla and his staff. And um, you know, we gave him a tour of our streets of what we're working with. Um, one of the things that he did on is, in his budget, is allowed us uh three million dollars to redo some of the streets in Old Town Imperial. And so, you know, I wanted to give him a tour of this is exactly what you're funding. And thank you, but we need more. Um, um, so yeah, so no, it was nice. I appreciated him and his staff coming down to City Hall and, you know, interacting with us, so. It's appreciated and, um, and with that, I will adjourn this city council meeting at seven forty-eight PM until the next regularly scheduled meeting, October eighteenth at seven PM.